Bargaining representative as determined by the Rhode Island State Labor Relations Board.
They are not here representing my clients.
Yes, I am.
I was told by John Dukelis, your boss, the general counsel of the NEAB, that under no circumstances was he going to, was the NEAB going to represent my clients.
That is a total lie.
And then suddenly I said-
That is a total lie.
We're not gonna go back-
I want to put it on the record-
You can put whatever you want to put in. That is a total lie.
I had to do this. Suddenly, suddenly- Are you gonna stop me from making my presentation?
Yes, right now I am because I'm recognizing-
Fine, I'll let her join us now, right?
Let's get this over with. Go ahead. The NEAB is recognized under state law as the collective bargaining representative.
On the ducking part, ladies and gentlemen.
I've been just talking about what we're trying to do.
You can go on.
My name is Jennifer Azavito. I am deputy executive director of NEAB Rhode Island and general counsel for NEAB Rhode Island. I'm here on behalf of NEAB Barrington and NEAB Rhode Island. These three people are members of NEAB Barrington and I'm here representing them in their interest with respect to, insofar as they are, thank you. Insofar as they are members of the collective bargaining unit. And I have a few remarks for the committee today. The facts of the matter are thus: In August of this year, the school committee amended its general and interim interim emergency policy on COVID-19 related issues to include the vaccine mandate with no other alternatives. NEAB bargained the effects of this mandate pursuant to law, and it was agreed that any sick time that had to be discharged because of illness due to receiving the vaccine or the booster would be covered by the district and not discharged from the members' personal allotment of sick days. On October 18th Superintendent Nekel Masori notified the members of NEAB who had not been vaccinated, who had objections to taking the vaccination, that they would be terminated and that the fact that they would refuse to get the vaccination placed undue burden on the district. The members who did not get vaccinated by November 1st will be placed on unpaid leave. Their health benefits will continue with co-share only until December 31st, 2021, and on January 1st, 2022, unemployment with EPS will be terminated. On October 22nd Superintendent Masori sent a follow-up letter to the remaining members who were still not vaccinated to inform them of their rights at this evening's pre-suspension and pre-termination hearing. The hearing does not dispute the district's ability to mandate the COVID vaccine as a condition of employment with EPS. We are proud of the fact that an overwhelming number of our members have been fully vaccinated in an effort to keep our community safe. We also acknowledge, however, that there may be objections which would prevent members from receiving the vaccine. At present, there is no statewide mandate for teachers to be vaccinated and there are other schools- Other school districts, while requiring vaccination against COVID-19, also allow for mitigation risks via high-quality masks, place where you can be testing, social distancing, air quality management, and food dispensation. Newport is among one of the school districts that allows for a vaccine or test. Union is asking that for these members who have expressed an objection to the vaccination, that the school district not place the members on unpaid leave and reject Superintendent Masori's recommendation to terminate. The school committee should allow those vital members of the Barrington community to continue in their employment by using mitigation strategies against COVID-19 that are already in place in the school districts and are proven to work. To lose these excellent teachers would be a disservice to the Barrington Public Schools and the children that they serve. These teachers have been with these students for two months. To terminate their employment is a death knell to their career and their objection to the vaccine should be noted and a petition for attorneys provided so that they can continue with their employment with the district. Thank you.
Ms. Azavito, one moment, please.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
And I apologize to you again. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Ms. Azavito, the deputy general counsel of NEAB RI? Any questions from the committee? Thank you.
I'd like to ask one question.
I do have a question. I'm sorry.
You did mention that there was one school district that also requires vaccines. You had mentioned Newport does-
Does vaccine or test?
Yeah, Newport does vaccine or test. Is there another district that does vaccine mandate?
Yes, Little Compton.
Thank you.
I also just want to add one more thing which I forgot to mention. Ray Picchirelli is here on behalf of these members. He's been retained by these three members. Normally, we would have an objection to having private counsel participate in this proceeding, but we are giving him an opportunity to present whatever case he wants to present with regard to any private causes of action or any other arguments that he wants to make to the committee without objection. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Azavito? Thank you very much. Now, Ms. Picchirelli, the floor is yours.
To begin with the last thing that you just heard. I was contacted by these three teachers a few days ago because their union told them that they would not represent me at this time. They told them they had two options: Get the vaccine or quit. That's not representation. That's abdication of representation. The union has an absolute right under Rhode Island law to represent all teachers being based for termination and to make all available defenses not to pick and choose based upon what their personal beliefs are. It's pretty clear that NEAB's belief is that all teachers should be vaccinated. They've taken a political stance on that. And they advocated their obligations to teachers on this. I contacted John Dukelis, the attorney, general counsel for the NEAB a couple of days ago to find out if this could possibly be true. And he told me in no uncertain terms, absolutely, that the union is not going to represent these teachers. Suddenly, I followed that up with an email. And in response to that email, John changed his tune and said suddenly that they would be here to represent these teachers. But when I asked what was that representation going to be, well, you heard me. That's not the full defense. So let me get right into that. First of all, this is completely inappropriate procedure. The school district attorney is making the presentation for the superintendent. That's not proper. The superintendent should be making the presentation. It is his recommendation to you. He has an obligation under the law to make that representation to you. He can't hide behind his attorney. Because he's done that, he's been able to avoid questions from the committee. Those questions have been directed through his attorney. Another inappropriate procedure. But that's just the beginning. Let's start with what exactly is being done here. As I read the letters from the superintendent, it is pretty clear there is no exemption religious, quite frankly, otherwise it's written into his letter, for the mandate to have the vaccine by November 1st. Any discussion about sincerely held beliefs is completely inappropriate. And while it's interesting that Superintendent's counsel has seen fit to cite cases about, for example, Indianapolis about pronouns, I can cite a case of Fourth Circuit, I believe, in Virginia, which reinstated a professor who was fired for not using pronouns. So we can go back and forth on that. Totally irrelevant to why we're here. Let's get to the point. What these teachers are being terminated for is insubordination. An allegation that they refused to comply with a reasonable and valid policy of this committee. The Commissioner of Education of Rhode Island has made clear that there can be no insubordination if the policy is neither valid nor reasonable. And yours is neither. And this is why. To be valid, you have to have some statutory authority to pass this policy. As I understand the way you did it, there was a meeting on August 24th. And at that meeting, on the agenda, what appeared was amended general and interim emergency policy on COVID-19 related issues. That's it. Nothing about a vaccine mandate for teachers. Now, it may have been buried in that policy, but the public notice that was published didn't say that. There are two Rhode Island Supreme Court cases, Annalee and Tanner. I'm sure both of your attorneys know those cases. They stand for the proposition that a public body must provide fair notice to the public under the circumstance or such notice based upon the totality of circumstances as would fairly inform the public of the nature of the business to be discussed and acted upon. I would suggest to you that under no reasonable interpretation would a member of the public read amended general interim policy to mean they're going to be mandating vaccines for staff. You violated the open meeting mode when you passed this policy. You violated it a second time when you renewed it or read it a second time on September 2nd. When you do that, the attorney general will declare your policy void. That's number one. Number two. In your policy, you cite for your authority 1629 Rhode Island General Laws and five subsections of that, 1, 2, 5, 8, 24. I'm not going to spend time with your counsel mentioning the care control and management. That's kind of a catch-all that school committees like to cite to unions all the time when they say they can do whatever they want. And unions usually fight over that, but not in this case. But what you didn't cite was 1621.7. Did anybody, did any of your counsel tell you about that statute? That statute says, "All schools shall have a school health program that shall be approved by the state director of the Department of Health and the Commissioner of Education." What is that? That's this. School health regulations passed by the Department of Health in conjunction with the Department of Education governing everything from vision and caring screening to the administration of EpiPen, to who can give a kid an Advil, and what hundreds and hundreds of chemicals which are banned from schools. This policy has been in effect since at least 1964. I believe they were last amended in 2014. Actually has a provision in this policy for immunization of children. There's a statute here in Rhode Island, 23, 23, 23, it's 2384, that governs, it's under the Department of Health, Title 23, and it governs immunizations. That power lies solely within the Department of Health. You have absolutely no power to mandate a vaccine to teachers, or anyone else. Has the Department of Health issued a mandate for vaccinating these teachers? No. Has the governor issued an emergency order mandating vaccination of teachers? No. For them to do that, they'd have to pass either a regulation under the school health regulations or do it by emergency rule. That's how they did the vaccine mandates for healthcare workers, by an emergency rule. To do that, you have to have a finding of imminent peril. If the state of Rhode Island, Department of Health, has not found imminent peril for unvaccinated teachers, who are you to find that? The union doesn't seem to agree with my argument on this point. I believe that any such mandate would be a mandatory subject of bargaining, not just the effects of it. Because there is no statewide mandate that you have to follow. This isn't, they expanded the school day from six and a half hours to seven hours. You have to have a seven-hour day and then you just go to negotiate the impact of that with the teachers. That's not what's going on here. And the union used to have very strong opinions about that, as I'm sure your counsel knows. The second point of a policy has to be its reasonableness. What's so reasonable about a policy? That you're the only district in the state except me, Little Compton, is the first I've heard of that. I thought they also had an opto, but maybe I'm wrong. Then even if you're one of two out of 39 school districts in your state, not to mention charter schools or regional districts, again, who are you to make that determination when no other committee in the state has done so? Your students and staff are more important than the rest of the state? It's absurd. And part of the reasonableness is offering alternatives. You've been operating, presumably from the beginning of this school year at least, with the same type of mitigation strategies you've had previously. Masking, ventilation, cleaning, et cetera. Those strategies have worked. Maybe not perfectly, but there's no perfect, vaccines are not perfect. You know that. Dr. McDonald testified under oath in court about a week ago that vaccines don't prevent you from getting the virus. It doesn't prevent you from spreading the virus. It only prevents you from getting more sick from the virus. He testified to that under oath. So if someone tells you the vaccine prevents you from getting or giving the virus, they're lying to you. If you don't believe me, call Dr. McDonald. I'm sure he'll tell you what he testified to last week. He'll also tell you that not one person under the age of 25 in the state has died of COVID. This is a disease that affects older people and people in ill health. That's undisputed. He'll also tell you that currently, for the last two weeks at least, there hasn't even been one COVID hospitalization, pediatric hospitalization. Not one. This is not a situation where your kids are getting sick and going to the hospital and dying. It's not happening. And to make, to give that impression is a disservice to your staff, to the public, if you leave that impression out there. You have an obligation as public officials not to spread that kind of news. what about that point about the vaccine keeping you from getting sicker? Well, there's a lot of things that people do that are not very healthy. People drink, people smoke, people eat fast food. You've got a mandate that people can't, your teachers can't do that next? That'll keep them healthier. It's ludicrous. You can't oppose a mandate like that because you think it's the best for them. It doesn't work that way. Now, before my clients, if you're going to read a statement. But before they do, I just have one last technical point. And I've already talked to your counsel about this, and I understand he disagrees with me. About two years ago, there was a case in South Kingstown where a teacher was terminated. Was terminated unmade, effective that coming school year. Commissioner of Education initially ruled that that termination could take effect immediately, notwithstanding Title 1613, section 1613.3, which states unequivocally, notice has to be provided by March 1st. That case was overturned by a superior court judge and the judgment became final. If you terminate these teachers, whether you do it tonight or you do it on January 1st, if it is ultimately upheld, they cannot take effect until next year. That case is Salvador versus South Kingstown. And the attorneys on that case were John Dukelis representing the teacher and Sarah Rapport, your counsel. Have my teachers, have you decided who to root for?
My name is Carrie Harper and I have been a chorus and music teacher at Barrington Middle School for the past 20 years. I have loved my family here at Barrington as well as the thousands of students I have wanted to teach so far in my career. In the beginning of the pandemic, I, like all other teachers, had to adapt to new ways of teaching. I took online workshops, watched multiple webinars, explored new software and apps that would make online and hybrid learning as successful as possible. It is far from easy to take a hands-on subject and make it work in an online or hybrid format. I also had to learn audio and video recording, processing, and editing to create performances for these performance-based classes that I teach. When we were allowed back to school in person last fall, I followed all of the district's RITOs and the CDC's guidance. In addition, I personally sought out multiple webinars and meetings that helped the middle school community have a vibrant course program while being safe. I found creative ways to showcase the great work my students were doing all year and spent countless hours at home processing and editing audio and video in order for families to enjoy the children's course performances throughout the year. For the past 20 months, I have made many changes in accommodations in order for my students to receive a quality education during this pandemic. Now, when I asked for the district to honor my legal religious right to accommodation, which would be to continue teaching in the same manner before this vaccine mandate was introduced, the school committee and central administration have decided to do something I could never do, and that is to let our students down. You feel that it's a better idea for students to lose out on a quality education and terminate me instead of allowing me to continue teaching the students of this town as I have been this whole time? On our first teacher PD day on August 30th, I read an email from our union president stating that the school committee voted to mandate the COVID vaccine for the EPS employees. I was in shock. How come my employer mandated a medical intervention as condition of employment? Why wasn't this negotiated with our union? What does this mean for me and my family, for whom I am the sole provider? Because my religious beliefs may or certainly honor an accommodation, wouldn't they? It is the law after all. After not receiving any policy information about this from central administration or my union president for the next couple of weeks, I decided to send Mr. Masori a letter requesting a religious accommodation on September 17th, knowing that our district accepts medical and religious accommodations for student vaccinations. He wrote back to me shortly after and stated he would be forwarding my letter to Doug Fiori. On the evening of October 18th, 31 days after I submitted a letter requesting a religious accommodation, I was notified that my request was denied due to there being an undue burden to the district in favor to honor my religious accommodations, excuse me, religious accommodation rights as granted to me by Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. No one from central administration ever reached out to me during those 31 days or tried to find an amenable accommodation that the district and I could work with, which should have been for me to continue to work in the same manner I have for the past 22 months. Why would I suddenly be a danger to my students and colleagues? Not last year, not this year, not today, not tomorrow. Do I suddenly become a COVID super-spreader on November 1st? I feel as though I should share my religious beliefs with you as it is within your right to ask that of me. 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verses 19 to 20, says, "Or do you not know that your body is the temple of the Holy Spirit within you who you have from God? You are not your own, for you were bought up at price to glorify God in body." 1 Corinthians, chapter 3, verse 17, also states, "If anyone destroys God's temple, God will destroy him; for God's temple is holy, and you are that temple." God designed us to live in this world as it is, and our bodies were created to deal with viruses. Secondly, it is imperative for me as a faithful person to stand up against tyranny and stand up for the less fortunate. We are supposed to fight for truth, for honesty, and for consent. All of this is being taken away by mandating this vaccine as a condition of our employment. Lastly, another important religious belief of mine is to not be afraid. The phrase "do not be afraid" is actually the most frequently written command in the Bible. I think we all need to realize that living in fear is no way to live. I pray for the day that we all no longer live in fear of this virus and start living a progressive life again.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight as an educator who have been denied a religious accommodation by Barrington Public Schools for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am Stephanie Hines. I am facing termination due to insubordination. I am unsure how I have been insubordinate when I have done nothing but follow the protocols that were stated to me on September 21st. Many of you don't know me personally. First and foremost, I am a Christian. I have used my belief system to guide all of my decisions, including accepting a job at Barrington Public Schools in 2016 despite having other offers at the time. Additionally, I am a wife and a mother of three children, two, four, and six. I inherit to advocate not only for myself, but also for my children. And I hope that they will never be faced with termination from employment based on their faith. One of the most discouraging things to me in this process is that I feel deceived and blindsided. While the school committee approved this mandate on August 24th, it was not communicated to the teachers until September 21st, nearly a month later, even though the date was dated a day before. I could have used the extra month in the beginning of the year to consider other employment options where jobs are more plentiful. In the notification email from Mr. Masori, it said to kindly submit a request for religious exemption as per Title VII in a timely fashion. I sent my request three days later on September 24th. I was never informed of the process or who would be on the review committee. In addition, it was so long between receiving an answer that I ended up not even being able to receive both doses by the November 1 deadline. I regretfully took this as a sign that my request would be accepted. Unfortunately, on Monday, October 18th, I was denied my request for religious accommodation. I was called an undue hardship. My family, a household who relies on two incomes, was told that we had less than two weeks to prepare to be placed on an unpaid leave unless I began the vaccination process. Even after seeking counsel by the union, I was told that my only options were to resign before my employment record was permanently damaged due to insubordination or go get the vaccine. Another piece of the deception is that I was told that this is a pre-termination hearing and I've already seen my full-time job posted on school strength as in a part-time capacity. The last nine days have felt like an household whirlwind. Personally, I have been impacted. I can't sleep or eat. My stomach is in knots and even worse, I couldn't even look at my students without me upset. I have worked through this pandemic since March 13th, 2020. I would like further clarification on how I am an undue burden. One burden listed in my denial letter was that the students I work with are ineligible to receive vaccination. As of Tuesday- As of Tuesday, this is no longer true, as the FDA panel authorized a vaccine for students aged 5 to 11 whose parents choose to do so. There is a good chance that younger students will be eligible for a vaccine in the early weeks of November. In COVID, in Barrington's COVID protocol, unvaccinated teachers have been identified and are subject to weekly testing, masking protocols, daily attestation, and a seven-day quarantine. Vaccinated teachers, however, are held to a different standard when it comes to being quarantined. While I understand that this is simply following protocol put out by the Department of Health in the Rhode Island playbook, I'd like to point out that because of this different standard, I was quarantined by a vaccinated teacher who caught it from another vaccinated teacher who was present at school on day five of exposure. This ultimately led to two classrooms being shut down and our staff receiving an email from the Department of Health, and it led to every person vaccinated or not who had stepped foot in those classrooms to need a negative PCR test to return back to school. It began an outbreak. On the other hand, when I had to quarantine, I couldn't return to work until day eight. This outbreak would not have occurred if we were held to the same standard. It also shows that the burden does not solely rest upon the unvaccinated. Instead of considering how I might hypothetically be a burden should I be subject to quarantine, here are some very real undue burdens I see for this district as of November 1st. My students won't receive their targeted instruction from me to help close the gap and will likely see a lapse in their service from a certified reading specialist. My family will lose half of its income immediately and our health insurance after December. And the Barrington's School Department is going to have to go through the effort of finding another highly qualified educator who has specialized training in ordinary killing ham. In conclusion, Barrington Public Schools prides themselves on being the best in the state. This is part of Mr. Masori's opening statement every year when we have new hires, that we have really great people because this is a really great district. Barrington also prides itself on being an inclusive and diverse school system. As an employee, I expected a more inclusive decision. By denying the three or four teachers who have sincerely held religious beliefs, no matter what sect it's from, you are stripping your school system of diversity in our community. I am disappointed and burdened by this policy and your decision to not accommodate religious exemptions. Regardless of your decision tonight, though, I know that I can hold my head high by saying truth to my beliefs.
My name is Brittany DiRio. I am a special education teacher at Somme School and work with children who have varying levels of special needs. I live here in Barrington with my husband and two young children. I'm not here to disparage any of you or the administrators, I'm not here to debate the efficacy of the vaccine. I think it's important that you have some knowledge of me as a person and as a teacher, and perhaps you will see how being terminated will devastate my family and I financially, professionally, and emotionally. I grew up in this town. My parents and grandparents have been longtime residents, business owners, and served our town committees in Barrington for 70 years since the early 50s. My husband's parents, grandparents, aunts, and uncles have also been longtime residents and business owners in this town for 90 years since the 1930s. When the opportunity to teach in Barrington came up last October, I jumped at the chance. I gave up a 12-year teaching position in Pawtucket to join the Barrington Schools. I have a bachelor's degree with a double major in early childhood education and special education. Additionally, I was in the state's first cohort of teachers from two school districts to become certified and earn my master's degree in teaching English to speakers of other languages in bilingual language immersion in the University of Rhode Island. I along with RIDE and the Rhode Island Foundation invested thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours in my education. Additionally, I've been rated highly effective in my last two performance assessments in Pawtucket and effective in my first year here at Somme's. See, Barrington prides itself on being the top public school in Rhode Island. Myself and others with similar types of credentials, experience, and a passion to teach are some of the reasons Barrington can claim this badge of honor. The investment you make to maintain this top spot by recruiting teachers like me and retaining the high quality of teachers who work here is enormous. Teachers and the people all over are following this and interested in what the outcome will be. Being one of three districts in the state of Rhode Island's 37, Barrington's actions will be followed closely by teachers throughout the state and the wider community. How you treat teachers, even a small minority like us, matters deeply. Treating people with respect, dignity, and a sense of fairness affects who you will be able to attract and retain in the future. On September 16th, I had a conversation with a union representative. I was told that exemptions would not be accepted and I would be put on unpaid leave and terminated. I emailed Superintendent Masori and I expressed my candid concern over the potential loss of my job. Through email correspondence, Superintendent Masori wrote, and I quote, "You were provided with inaccurate information." In the signed MOI with the union, if you look at number two, you will see the statement that all unvaccinated staff must wear two masks or a KN95 mask, as well as being placed on a mandated testing schedule. I then met with Mr. Masori in his office, who again referenced the MOI, and was told that if I followed the protocols of weekly testing, wearing a KN95 mask, and filling out a daily attestation form, that I would not be terminated. "Mr. Masori, you even asked before I left your office, do you feel better now? Over the past week, we've been told in writing the following things: refusing the vaccine is considered insubordination; number two, disciplinary action is being taken; number three, you will be terminated for cause, which likely makes us ineligible for unemployment; number four, being terminated for cause requires us to disclose on future employment applications that we have been involuntarily terminated for insubordination; number five, we may not opt to resign rather than be fired, so we have better chance or outlook in finding another position; number six, I've been denied a religious exemption without engaging in an interactive process to identify reasonable accommodations." As if the termination action isn't severe enough, taking additional actions such as disciplinary, suspension, classification of insubordination, all have an immediate impact on my ability to find other employment, even in districts that don't require the vaccine and in other fields. This seems to cross over the fairness line and is completely disproportionate to not getting the vaccine. I have done nothing wrong. My performance is effective, yet you are willing to terminate me and take it a step further and destroy my future ability to earn a living. I have followed all protocols that you have asked me to follow. What's suddenly changed when we have worked all throughout the pandemic? Why all of a sudden might be terminated without discussions of accommodations? I was never out of compliance with what you asked me to do. What makes me more of a threat to other safety now, especially since you've had two fully vaccinated teachers spread COVID to students and shut down two classrooms with more than 50 staff and students the week of October 4th? Is this how a highly regarded school department treats its highly valued teachers? Is it possible that other highly educated and highly qualified teachers hearing how this is unfolding may think twice about working for Barrington Public Schools? I hope you all can truly reflect on the decisions you are making and how these decisions will affect me, my two young children, and my family, as well as my students and my fellow
Well, I can't move my back, but there's nothing else to say. Does anyone on the school committee have any questions for the three teachers or Mr.
Really nice, guys. You're taking them for the service? Are we the ones who have questions of the administration, things that they raise?
The administration can respond at this point, but before we do that, are there any questions for the three teachers or Mr. Pitrelli?
I just, I was a little confused about, I think one person said that you got notified at the end of August before school started by the union that there was a mandate, and then another person said that there was a letter in September. I just wanted to clarify when you guys first heard from anybody that there was a vaccine mandate.
The union notified us, but what they said was that negotiations were still undergoing and more would be communicated to us later.
And I had a conversation on September 16th with a union representative. I was prior to leaving, September 16th was a holiday for Barrington. The day before was a union meeting, and I had asked her, "I know the mandate is in place, what are the protocols for unvaccinated staff members, and what are the steps that we need to take?" She gave me a phone call on September 16th, relayed a message to me that they are not accepting any exemptions. We put out an undue leave as to not collect unemployment and then terminated.
Are there any other questions for the three teachers or Mr. Pitrelli? Does the administration have anything to say in reply?
At this point, I would respond to Mr. Pitrelli's allegations of the invalidity of the policy by pointing out that under Tanner, the notice needs to apprise the community of the basics of the information that's going to be discussed. This was a policy that was read twice. In accordance with the practice of the school committee, it is read out loud.